I pledge allegiance to the flag. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm going to call our meeting to order. Welcome, everybody. If you have a cellphone, you may want to set it to silent. If you need a listening device, ask one of the county staff. And the meeting documents are public record. They're available at any time during regular county hours in the auditor's office, and they are also right on the end by Commissioner Hyburger. Look for a motion to approve our agenda.
So moved.
Second, Bender.
Motion by Bar, second by Bender. All those in favor?
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. We have several meeting minutes. We have, look for approval of the meeting minutes for the regular commission meeting on September 28th.
Motion to approve those minutes?
Second.
Hyburger.
Second by?
Barth.
Barth. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. Next minutes are from the joint Dell Rapids-Minnehaha County minutes.
Motion to approve.
Second, Hyburger.
Second by Hyburger. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. And then the third one is approve the joint city of Sioux Falls and the Minnehaha County minutes.
Approve. Hyburger.
Second, Benega.
Motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. Bills to be paid in the amount of $713,047.06.
Pay the bills.
Second, Bender.
Comments? Alrighty. Motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. Several reports. The auditor's account with the county treasurer for August, the county coroner's report for July, the mobile crisis team statistics for August. All good reports. I went through them. There's some really neat information in there if you want to take the time. Encourage you to do so. Personnel actions. Look for a motion to approve routine personnel.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Bar, second by Benega. All those in favor?
Aye.
Pose same sign. Barth and Benega. Okay. So we have significant employee anniversaries. Good morning, Carrie.
Good morning, Carrie Dever from Human Resources. I'm pleased to present you with the October anniversaries, starting with Jeff Pironema, celebrating five years of service. And we have Jeff with us here in the corner. We also have Skylar Earlystone-Aero celebrating five, and Jason Roder celebrating five. They're both in the sheriff's office. Betsy Doyle at the PDO is celebrating 10. Mark Joyce at the state's attorney's office also celebrating 10 years of service. And we have Don Cox at the JDC celebrating 15. And then we have two employees celebrating 25 years of service this month. Richard Dodge, who's at the museum, and Jamie Phelps, who's at Human Services.
There he is.
Morning, Jamie. Thank you.
Can I convince either of you to come up and say a word? Okay, great.
Thank you. And thanks for opportunity to serve.
Got his support group in the corner here.
All right. Record volunteers for the county departments for September 2021.
Another area of good news. We have just shy of 200 employees who are volunteering in seven different areas across the county. So our gratitude, of course, to them again this month.
Thank you to them. And our action item, special personnel action to approve reclassification of the Human Services Administrative Secretary, pay grade 10 to an administrative clerk, pay grade nine.
This position recently became vacant, and as Carrie and Lori looked at their operation, they've decided to have all the individuals in the area up front that help the people who are coming in act in a similar capacity. So they're asking for this position to be reclassified to an administrative clerk, which is one pay grade lower. And they're both here if you have any questions.
Questions, motions, move for approval. Benega.
Second, Bender.
Commissioner Bender, did you have a comment?
No.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
We're good. Thank you, Carrie. We have no applications for abatements, no notices and requests, no planning and zoning notices, and no petitions for compromise lien. We are at the opportunity for public comment. If there's anybody that would like to address the commission about a non-agenda item, now is your opportunity.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Point of personal, we have a new person up at the front here, and perhaps you'd like to introduce her.
I know it's Kim with a Y, so we're training a new deputy auditor. Ron has done a fantastic job filling in. And Kim just started last Wednesday, I believe. Correct? No?
Monday.
Yesterday. Oh, okay. Well, welcome. Baptism by fire here. So, yeah. That's why we're taking the time to announce who's doing the motions and the seconds to help make the job a little bit more easier. So, alrighty. Nobody up for public comment? We have a briefing, non-action item on the Summit Carbon Solutions Pipeline. Mr. Lederman, the podium is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My name is Dan Lederman. I think I've met almost everyone here at least once or twice. But I'm with a group called LS2 Group, and I've been hired for government relations to set up meetings like this across the length of the proposed pipeline that will be crossing South Dakota on its way to North Dakota. So my comments here, I do have a PowerPoint that we can burn through, or if you want to look at our South Dakota briefing. This right here talks about the project, and I can wrap it up in a nutshell. It's capturing carbon from ethanol plants among the five states, Minnesota, Iowa, Nebraska, South Dakota, and North Dakota. This diagram here shows how the pipeline process would go, where you take the land, you do the site surveys, and you basically dig the hole, bury the pipe, and then remediate the ground afterwards. The group that's doing this project is called Summit Carbon Solutions, and they're a subsidiary of Summit Ag, Summit Agriculture. And if you want to know more about them, they've got quite an executive team set up. Their advisors, senior advisors include Ambassador Branstad from Iowa, and they have about 30 years of experience in the agricultural space. The pipeline would travel from those five states, and it would connect smaller industries. 31 different ethanol plants, seven of them in South Dakota. So the total pipeline length is about 2,000, 2,000 miles. And the reason why it's so long is because all the feeder pipes that would come in from ethanol plants. Carbon capture's been around a long time. It's been, it's been used in the ag industry for a very long time, in ethanol plants. I think currently there's 40 facilities that use carbon capture for ethanol right now. The goal is to get the carbon from the plants, transport it up to North Dakota, and then it would be deposited at a terminus in North Dakota where it can hold up to 400 million tons of carbon in a geological formation that's located 5,000 feet below the ground. This project timeline would start right now with meetings across the state. Some of your constituents might have been contacted already by land agents that are doing site surveys. And we currently have over 70% voluntary site surveys in the state of South Dakota. So we have a lot of folks that are allowing the land agents onto the land. So some of your constituents might have gotten a letter, or they might be in the process of surveying their property. We do not have a map to share yet because it has been changing a little bit here and there as we get into different situations. And I think if you recall from Dakota Access Pipeline, we actually changed the position of the pipeline to go around Sioux Falls. It took an alternate route. But I'll be here throughout the process of the permitting, which is to start here next year, construction in 2023. And then we hope to have the pipeline in operation by 2024. And if you have questions about it, you can always reach out to me. My contact information is with the auditor and in the materials that have been distributed. But I'd like to leave it open for questions, and if also if you have any concerns or accusations, that's a good, this will be a good time for that. Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Lederman. Questions? Commissioner Barth.
Thanks. Senator, it's great to see you again. So one of the things that I've noticed is that CO2 is actually used industrially as well. Why don't we use it industrially instead of burying it?
Mr. Chair, I don't know the, 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 the reason why this carbon would not be used or sold. It may. But at this point, it's being sequestered, and the whole point of the pipeline is to get it out of the atmosphere. So this would be carbon that normally would be released out into the open air. That would be compressed into liquid and then transported for sequestration.
Please.
I'm really happy that sequestration is being attempted, but it's, it's really just a start of the amount of carbon that we need to sequester. It's, you know, trillions of tons have been put into our atmosphere. And hopefully, the, you know, again, this is a start, and I don't mind that. Pipelines have never been popular around here, but...
Thank you.
Alrighty. Well, more to come, I'm sure. So thank you, Dan.
Yes, sir. There will be public meetings for landowners and officials, so be on the lookout. I'll, I'll reach out to you when we get to that time. It might be as early as this month yet. So with that, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming. Alrighty, moving on to a second reading to consider adoption of an ordinance establishing the licensing and regulation of medical cannabis dispensaries in Minnehaha County. Mr. Boge.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Eric Boge, State's Attorney's Office. Just to remind everyone, we have had many meetings about this particular topic, and certainly a nice at-length conversation about it at the last meeting. All the changes that we had discussed over the period of time have been incorporated, and it were, that were accepted by you at the last meeting, so that's why we had an additional reading today to make sure every, all of you, as well as the public, had an opportunity to digest all of those mostly grammatical stylistic changes to make it consistent throughout the ordinance. So at this point, not to belabor the, the whole second reading concept or third reading concept, I would stand by for any questions that any of you might have. I don't know if we need another explanation of it at this point.
Appreciate that. Thank you very much. Questions from the commissioners? Commissioner Bender.
I don't really have a question. I would just note that I have been contacted by nobody on this ordinance. There's been nobody here for public comment for the last two meetings where we've discussed this. So you would have to assume that that means everybody's fully in favor of this ordinance as drafted.
We have no blanks to fill in, correct?
There should not be any blanks left. There was one blank at the last meeting we discussed. That was the amount of publication. We went with the standard two-week prior to the time that the licenses are available, and that publication will be on your website. So. One final comment I would add. I would love to be able to tell all of you that this is Shakespearean or biblical in nature, and this will not require any changes in the future. But I'm sure that practice and application will highlight things that maybe none of us caught. Again, an opportunity to say thank you to Auditor Ben Kite and his staff for a very careful reading that they put into this and the changes that they suggested. So that was very helpful. But I think we will have opportunities to, to massage this as the time goes along. But it's, it's a live and learn process for all of us around the state. So hopefully, we, we got as close as we can with the first one. But that's the process of our ordinances, that we do have an opportunity to amend them if we need to. So.
Okay. Mr. Chairman. Thank you for all your work on this. Yes, sir.
So I guess I'd like to reiterate some of my concerns about this. And I do appreciate the fact that it can be modified going forward. And I think that's the benefit of, of having that ability. But I think that to ban the cultivation means that farmers, fertilizer people, electricians, they don't get to do any business. To ban the testing means that we have to rely on other places to test it. Is, is Mexico okay to test our, our product? How about Moody County? Are we ready for them to do it? Those are jobs, and we're not allowed to manufacture it. So despite the fact that you unanimously said you're pro-business, I think it's clear you're against this business. You're against people in Minnehaha making money. And I, I remember when hemp was legalized on the national level, I suggested that Minnehaha County, through Makita, become a, a manufacturer of hemp products. It didn't happen. At that time, North Dakota and Minnesota did not have hemp processing stuff. They now do, and we don't, at least in this county. I guess Galbraith does have that ability. But we decided we don't want those jobs. They can go somewhere else and make their money. And, and is that what this commission is saying? We don't want those jobs? Anyway, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Alrighty. Looking for a motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve. Bender, sorry.
Second.
Second by Hyburger. Call the roll, please.
Benega?
Aye.
Hyburger?
Aye.
Barth?
No.
Bender?
Aye.
Harski?
Aye. Motion carries four to one. Moving on to consider a resolution determining the fees for medical cannabis dispensary license applications, licenses, and renewals. Mr. Boge.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Again, Eric Boge, State's Attorney's Office. As we discussed at previous meetings, plural, the fee structure is separate from the ordinance itself. That is the document that you have in front of you now. There are blanks on this one that you will need to fill in before you adopt. But again, because it is a resolution, this is a one-reading-only process. So I had asked Auditor Ben Kite to provide additional copies, which I handed out to you because I assume everyone is like me. I'm a visual learner, to see what other jurisdictions across South Dakota had done for their fee structure. That is not in any way an attempt to lobby you one direction or another. It's sometimes just helpful to see what other folks, and that was my anticipated thought that your question might be to me this morning, what are some of the other jurisdictions doing? So Ben had done a very nice job laying that out from a meeting he had been involved in. I found it very helpful. I thought I'd provide it to all of you if you hadn't already seen it. So as you'll see in the, the resolution, there are three different fees that I am asking that you set. You could today, if you so choose, to combine any one or more of them into one fee. But the ordinance that we just adopted does have them separated, at least by name. An application fee, a license fee, and then a renewal fee. The only thing I would say that I did during my research on this is attempt to articulate, first of all, I am 26, as codified says, that we, as local jurisdictions, are allowed to require a license and to set a fee for such license, and such fee should be reasonable. So to that extent, that's the only guidance that the, the voters or electors have given us on that structure. Can't blame the legislature on this one. That, that's the only direction we have. That being said, reasonable is open to a lot of interpretation. And so some of the research I had done coming into this was to ask some of the various departments, and Mr. Kite is here for the auditor's office, again largely being the one that will manage that application process, but to see what kind of time each of those various departments will have into the application review and licensing before it comes to you, I guess is what I'm trying to say. So because that first reading or first public hearing before you actually issue the license, there's a lot of background work that we'll have done on county staff. Having said that, the other thing I would ask all of you to at least envision or keep in mind as you're setting fees, this may be slightly in the, could be categorized into lobbying effort, was for all of you to understand that while we're only issuing one license, my boss and all of his staff will have the dubious honor of prosecuting any violations that occur, regardless whether those license violations occur in the county or any of the various municipalities around in Minnehaha County. So the license fee and application fee should, at least as you're setting that amount, keep that in mind that we are not gaining revenue from the other licenses, but we will have the prosecutorial responsibilities and costs associated. So some of that cost could be viewed as law enforcement, certainly. Some of that could be on the prosecutorial side of things. So those are things to at least consider as you're setting those fees. I hope that Auditor Kite will come up and articulate some of his thoughts, as well as on the actual application and the amount of time that his office will have. Stand by for any questions.
Okay. And I'm going to call, I don't know if I can do this, point of order on myself. Item 11 was a public reading or second reading, and I didn't ask for public input on that. So is anybody here that wanted to address the commission on our second reading? Okay, so good to know, so we don't have to go back and redo our motion in seconds. So was willing to do that if we had to. So moving on to our fees and licenses. My only question, and I'm going to lead this off. I apologize to my commissioners. I usually wait till the last. But so the city charges a licensing fee, just like we do, but they have five, I think, or something?
That's correct.
So if a violation occurs, it still comes back to the county, is your point, for prosecution and, and et cetera, violations of state statute?
Again, more for the audio record. Thank you, Mr. Chair, Eric Boge, State's Attorney's Office. If the violation is criminal in nature, yes, then it would come to, for prosecution to the state's attorney's office. If it is more ministerial or administrative in nature, the city, and I shouldn't say the city, Sioux Falls or Dell Rapids or Brandon, for example, any of those jurisdictions could handle those administrative things in-house, depending on what their respective ordinances or resolutions, depending on how they adopted those, could be handled internally. But I'm assuming at some level, the majority of those that arise may be criminal in nature, and as such, would end up at the state's attorney's office.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, on that point, I've suggested that the sheriff take that into account when he signs those contracts with the smaller communities for patrolling. I know Garrettson is only getting one dispensary, but, you know, maybe that should increase the, the cost for us to keep order there.
So we are, we're open for discussion for our fees. Commissioner Hyburger.
Well, I'm hoping we can take them one at a time, but I'd like to hear what Ben has to say about the licensing fees.
Okay. Thank you. Auditor Kite, good morning again.
Yes, good morning. Ben Kite, Auditor's Office. So, yeah, I asked my staff to kind of do some, call it analysis, but at least some thoughts into, you know, the time that it would take to process and do the background work on a application primarily. And again, this is not a scientific research, and I don't know that we were able to, you know, talked with the sheriff's office and the planning and zoning that might be involved as well. But, you know, after looking at other counties, not only in the state, but around the country, what type of fees they charge, came up with a number of like $2,500 for an application fee, and then $1,500 for the renewal fee. That was just, you know, our thoughts on what we thought it would take to compensate the office and, and the county for processing those. Again, I don't know if I'm underestimating, you know, planning, zoning, what they might have to do in the sheriff's office. But that was our thoughts. We really didn't have any recommendation on the licensing fee. Leave that up to the commission to decide.
So you're $2,500 for an application. You mentioned something about a renewal fee of $1,500.
Correct. Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Commissioner Hyburger?
I would just, I'm just going to start throwing out numbers, but I think application fee should be about $5,000 just because he's only looking at the auditor's office, and we do have the sheriff's office. And this is the only revenue we get to support the work that's going to go into it.
And the planning and zoning office and making sure the site is at the right place.
And our own staff, as they have to prepare it to go on to agendas and everything else that they have involved in it.
Other comments? So we have, we'll take them one at a time. So we have a suggestion of $5,000 for the initial application fee.
And I would, sure, I would just maybe comment in the list that I had provided you from the other counties around the state, I think that was a number that was consistently mentioned, $5,000.
I see that. Thank you. So is that a motion?
I make that a motion.
I'll second that.
So we have a motion and a second to set the initial application fee at $5,000. Additional comments?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
So how soon do they, how soon will we have applications out there for people to apply?
I have no idea. Who can answer that?
Mr. Chairman, Eric Boge, State's Attorney's Office. Commissioner Barth, that's a very good question. It'd be pursuant to state law, it'd be 20 days after the effective date of the ordinance that you just adopted. So as soon as we have that process published and the application form itself, and I will work with the auditor's office to make sure we have that lined up. But as soon as it's possible to do so, they will be out there. So not too down, far down the road.
November, would you say?
I, I don't, I'm sorry. I should have looked at a calendar for publication requirements before I came in this morning. I did not. But that, that's reasonable to assume at this point that it'll be early part of November before we'll have applications ready.
Thank you.
All righty. Motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Can I clarify something? You had a motion by Hyburger. Who is the second by?
Benega.
Benega, I'm sorry.
That's right. Hyburger?
Aye.
Barth?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Sorry. Hyburger?
Yes, aye.
Harski?
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. Alrighty. So moving on to the initial license fee for a medical cannabis establishment shall be discussion. Do we have ideas what, I mean, Sioux Falls is at 50,000, I believe. Correct?
Correct.
And I think within the, that handout I gave you, I think I saw some, Lincoln County, I think might have been 50,000. I think I did see a couple hundred thousand dollar fees that might have been highlighted.
Meade County was at 125. Meade County was at 125.
Okay, yeah. So there, there was a wide range, but some higher ones as well that might be more appropriate.
Commissioner Hyburger?
I'm going to start it off again. I, I'm in favor of going high. And so I've come down significantly from where I started months ago. But I would like to see us at that 150 to 125 to 150. I'd like to see the 150 because I think that we need to have money in our budget to possibly add law enforcement and to cover those costs in the state's attorney's office and everywhere else. We can always come down if we feel that it's unreasonable in the future. But I think that we need to start at a higher number, and I think that it's well justified. This is the only revenue we get. We get no tax revenue or anything else off of marijuana. This is it.
Alrighty. Additional comments?
Is there a second?
I didn't make a motion yet. I'm just starting the conversation.
I guess I wonder how we come up with that number. I, I remember being at a city council meeting, and they wanted to raise a fee to, for something or other, to $50. And Kermit Stager says, you know, how did you come up with that? And their answer was, well, we haven't raised it in a long time. And it seems to me like this is just a random number. And, you know, I, I think that it also precludes regular people from going into this business. And certainly a multinational like Amazon could, could apply and pay that. But, you know, Smo's Bar won't be able to. And I think, I think it's either too high or too low.
Additional comments?
Well, I would agree. There's no mathematical formula where we can figure out what our additional costs are going to be for, for law enforcement primarily in this area. And that we, we don't, you know, we don't have any track record. We can't look back and try to extrapolate what it's cost us in the past and go forward. I personally think 150 might be a little high. I probably would be more comfortable in the $100,000 range. But I don't think we're going to be able to come up with any formula that, you know, and in the future. Well, when we have more of a track record, we might have some more opportunity to do that. But I think that when you look at numbers nationally where this has happened, law enforcement costs have not gone up, gone down. They've gone up, at least all the studies that I've read. And so I, I think that there is a good argument that we need to, there shouldn't be a cost, an added cost to our taxpayers. We should try to protect our taxpayers from not having, incurring additional tax burden from law enforcement for enforcing this or, or dealing with any crime that spins off of this business. And so I, I would personally be more comfortable at the $100,000 range, but I don't think we're going to be able to come up with any real formula for how we come up with that number today.
Well, I would agree with... Well, I would agree with Commissioner Bender. I think going through the task force conversations, that $100,000 was where we kind of assumed that we were going to go. And I would be comfortable with doing 100.
I guess I'll throw my thoughts in on the math. You know, deputy state's attorney is a little over $100,000 a year. The cost of a deputy, I mean, is it safe to assume that the licensing or the introduction of medical marijuana is going to add to our criminal justice costs? I think that's a very reasonable assumption. Is it one full-time deputy state's attorney? Is it, is it another deputy in a patrol car? You know, what, what is it, what is the cost of, of doing this? And I don't know if Daniel Hager, our state's attorney, has comments on this, but if you do, I'd welcome them.
There's probably times where I'll have comments on stuff that I should keep to myself, times when I can share them. I, I think that this is going to be an interesting issue, right? If you look at our possession of marijuana cases, I anticipate that those will go down, because people will be possessing it, hopefully legally, through the licensing process and having that card. Very often, we are seeing substance use involved in our other crimes, right? So, just saying, well, if you legalize all substances, that gets rid of other crime, or it reduces crime, our violent crime, our homicides, burglaries, a lot of that stems from substance use. I can't stand here and say that this will have a positive impact on what that's going to do to my office. Certainly, some of that misdemeanor prosecution, I think we'll see that decrease. But I, I don't stand here with a lot of confidence saying that this is going to be a, a net crime reduction. I, I think it'll just kind of shift to where our resources, resources are being spent. So, I do anticipate that we'll be asking for employees, certainly as we are post-COVID. I think we're asking for that as well. And you stated, you know, a deputy state's attorney quickly takes up any money that we're making off of licensing.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Questions? Look for a motion. Commissioner Hybarger?
I'm going to make a motion for 125, so it's right in the middle of my 150 and their 100, and see if I get a second.
I have a motion for $125,000, looking for a second. I'm going to let that die for lack of a second.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I, I make a motion for one and a half million dollars.
I'm going to let that die for lack of a second. All righty, looking for another motion.
I'll make a motion at $100,000.
I'll second that.
So, we have a motion and a second. Additional discussion? Call the roll.
Barth?
No.
Bender?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Hybarger?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye, motion carries four to one. And then, I'm just going to make a comment that the licensing fee is one for the entire county, where the application fee is non-refundable, if I'm not mistaken. So, everybody that wants to apply for that one has to pay 5,000, and that's just to cover the cost. So, going on to our renewal license of that one licensing fee, look for a number of comments from our commission.
Commissioner Hybarger, please.
I'm not going to go 100,000 on this, but I, I would say, I think that it needs to not be $2,500, just because this would be the ongoing cost or the ongoing revenue we would have to support that law enforcement. Because if we're just going to have $100,000 that first year, we still have to figure out how to continue to support our expenses on this side. I'm not advocating for anywhere close to $100,000, but I'm just throwing that out there. I don't know what that number is.
Mr. Chairman?
Please.
I think that $5,000 would be fine, but I would also say that, what's the crime here? People with a license to use it go and get it. I mean, if, if someone is breaking in there, if someone is sticking them up with a gun, these are issues that are law enforcement. And while oftentimes, these crimes are called drug-related crimes, when Al Capone machine-gunned his enemies, nobody said it was alcohol-related. It was, it was crime. So, we always have to prosecute criminals. And I, I wish we had licenses to drink alcohol, and that if, if I, if, if you didn't have a license and I gave you a beer, I could be prosecuted. Instead, we just have an age limit, which is kind of a random thing. And I, I think that we don't know how much we're going to have abusing your medicine. Generally, it's not a crime. People are taking opioids, aspirin, whatever. I, I hope we don't. But I, I think that the crime we get is going to be more like robberies and stick-ups, break-ins. Thank you.
I would argue it is about the money, and that's what we're talking about here. And I think 2,500 is too, I think 5,000 is too low. I was thinking 50,000, and, and maybe 25 is a reasonable number. But I'm, I'm open to hear other thoughts on it. But I'm, I'm in favor of at least $25,000 for the renewal fee.
I would be in favor of at least 25,000 as well.
I would too.
That's one of those numbers that is hard to justify also. Hopefully, the renewal is clean most of the time. So, 25,000 is fine with my number.
Mr. Barth?
You know, I can go along with that, too. And I keep in mind that we can always change it if it turns out to be not what we are afraid of here. And so, we can, I'll make a motion for 25 and $25,000, and with the hope that two years down the road, it'll be 5,000.
Have a motion.
I'll second that motion.
Motion and a second, further discussion. Call the roll.
Bender?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Hybarger?
Aye.
Barth?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye, motion carries unanimously. Thank you, everybody. Appreciate all the input on that. All righty, moving on to our briefing by the South Dakota-
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I think you need to adopt the resolution in total now.
Oh, okay. So, look for a motion. So, we have all, all the fees decided. Now, we need a motion to adopt the resolution in its entirety.
Motion to adopt the resolution in its entirety.
Second.
Benninga.
Call the roll.
Benega?
Aye.
Hybarger?
Aye.
Barth? Bender?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye, motion carries four to one. Thank you, Eric. All right, briefing by the South Dakota Department of Legislative Audit on the Minnehaw County FY 2020 audit, something we get to do once a year. Good morning, sir.
Good morning, I'm Jeff Schaefer, I'm with the Department of Legislative Audit. We have just completed your fiscal and compliance audit for 2020. It's in its final form. Each of you have been provided with a management letter summarizing what we'll talk about here today. As you'll notice, on the second page, it talks about any items that were material enough to be brought to the attention of the board. And you'll also notice that a good thing is that there were none. There were other less significant items that were talked with appropriate personnel and handled in that fashion. There were some small adjustments that were proposed. We didn't even have to make, we didn't have to even do a formal adjustment this year. So, things went very well. And so, I leave it to you, any questions that you may have for me.
This is a briefing, so no action required. But if you have questions or comments?
We did good.
We did good. Unmodified opinion, that's as good as it gets, so.
Commissioner Bender?
I would just like to give a big shout out to the Auditor's Department and, for great work. Thank you.
Direct reflection. Thank you. Thank you, Jeff.
All right, thank you.
Look for a motion to approve the five-year transportation plan in accordance with the BIG fund requirements, and authorize the chair to sign the 2022-2026 certification inform. And the BIG stands for?
Bridge Improvement Grants.
There you go, state, state fund, okay?
Good morning, Commissioners, Steve Groen, Highway Superintendent. Last Tuesday, we had our annual township meeting, which is required by the South Dakota Department of Transportation. Shannon Schultz and Jacob Mars gave a presentation on our upcoming five-year plan. We sent out about 150 invitations, and as typical, four people showed up, one township and three residents. The State Department of Transportation requires us to certify our attendance list, that we followed all the rules, that's why we're here today. If you have, the five-year plan is what you saw during the budget process earlier this year. So, hopefully, there is no surprises. We're just looking for your support to approve our, that we had a township meeting.
Questions, comments, motions?
I'd make a motion to approve the plan.
Second.
Motion by Benega, second by Barth, all those in favor?
Aye.
All same sign, motion carries. Thank you, Steve. Authorize chair to sign plat, sign plat of tracks one, two, three, and four, Willow Creek Church Edition, for a right-of-way vacation for the reconstruction of County Highway 137. So, we're taking a vacation.
Commissioner, it's Jacob Mars from the Highway Department. You've probably seen this item go across your desk several times now. This plat ultimately transfers the ground from, from the county to the property owners adjacent to the, the section line, where we're vacating it. So, this is the last piece of the puzzle before the property goes back to the rightful owners.
All righty, questions, comments, motions?
I'd make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Bender, second by Barth, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All same sign, motion carries. And look for, authorize the chair to sign an amendment with ISG Inc. for highway facility construction. Hello, Carol?
Good morning, Commissioners, Carol Mottler, Commission Office. We were really pleased and excited that the construction bids for the highway facility came in under the GMP, the Guaranteed Maximum Price, which provided the flexibility to look at alternates, and those you've already covered during a previous building committee. And before you two today, before you today is the amendment to ISG, the architects, and undoing the changes that they've got. One is office area layout for $10,000. That's some right sizing to be done on that. The catwalk structural steel changes is being changed, there's no cost to that. We are able to put in a full auto body, auto bay wash, as compared to just the underbody. Did I say that correctly to our Highway Superintendent?
Vehicle wash.
Vehicle, yeah. Anyway, they're going to get the whole thing taken care of. The construction on, or the architect fee on that will be $4,398. The access control camera changes, $2,878. And cooling in the maintenance bay area will be $8,232. We've also changed, updated the contract, current, the current language in the contract stated that if the work wasn't completed by, it's either August or September of 2022, that there would be additional fees to the architect. And we know that the project will go a little bit beyond that, so this extends it to the end of 2022 at no cost. So, for your proposal today is to authorize the chair to sign this amendment.
Questions, comments?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All same sign, motion carries. I think this is a great thing for our employees of the Highway Department, and retention, recruitment, and just being able to, just for a great work environment. So, we're, we're, we're doing it right, so. All righty, we have three resolutions to restore the following tax deed properties to the former owners of title. First one is RDID 29190. Mr. Kite?
Yes, thank you, Commissioner Ben Kite, Auditor's Office. Yes, back in August, we, we, Minnehaw County acquired a total of eight properties through the tax deed process. If you recall, last week, we had a resolution to restore three of those deeds back to the original owners. This is the other three that have, were asking to restore their deeds. The property owners came in and, and made full payments of their past due taxes for these properties, as we said. All right, RDIDs 29190, RID 30344, and 34309 are all now current and back on the tax rolls. So, I would ask for your support in passing resolutions to restore those tax deeds.
Okay, so we'll start with RDID 29190. Any questions or comments? Glad to see they're back on the tax rolls. And look for a motion and a second?
Motion to restore, Bender?
Second.
Hybarger?
Second by Hybarger, call the roll.
Hybarger?
Aye.
Barth? Bender?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye, motion carries, RDID 30344, look for a motion?
So moved.
Second, Benninga.
Motion and a second, call the roll.
Barth?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Hybarger?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye, motion carries, RDID 34309.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second by Barth, call the roll.
Bender?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Hybarger?
Aye.
Barth?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye, motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, I want to thank the auditor for whittling it down to three. I mean, we really don't want your property. Just pay your taxes. We don't want to take it back from you.
Valid point. And there, there was an auction, and Ben, you're here to give us a quick briefing on it?
Yes, so, we did, we acquired, we, again, Minnehaw County acquired a total of eight properties through the tax deed process. Of those, as I mentioned, six of them were able to pay their past due amounts and bring themselves current. We did end up with two properties, parcel number 48244, located at 212 West Russell, and parcel numbers-
On Ben?
Can't hear.
I can't hear with the, the aircraft noise, I'm sorry.
Sorry. So, yeah, parcel 48244 at 212 West Russell in Sioux Falls, and parcel number 70628 at 4208 North Janes. Those properties were, had an active bidding. We had 20 different people attend here who were in this room for the auction. The one on West Russell brought $41,600, which is above what the appraisal board had, had thought it was worth, but about where the appraised value is at, or equalization. And then, the property at 4208 North Janes brought in $167,300, and well above its, you know, I think appraisal value. But I thought, a good result, you know, we collected a total of past due taxes from the tax deed process of $112,000, which is apportioned back to all the taxing districts. As I mentioned to, at the auction, too, the county doesn't keep all the excess funds over and above the tax due. So, all the excess funds are apportioned back to all the taxing districts, which include the City of Sioux Falls, the Sioux Falls School District, the East Water, East Dakota Water District, along with Minnehaw County. So, just because we received a, a large amount over the tax due, it's apportioned back to all these individual taxing districts. Any questions on the tax deduction?
Not seeing any. It's obvious that the auditor's office is such an integral part of what the commission does, so we thank you for, you know, what you do and all your staff. And we're going to move on to the next item. And back in 2016, I was elected as a county commissioner in that election, and we had an individual in your office that I thought had been there forever, just based on her experience and knowledge. I, I was just amazed at, you know, how easy she made our job, and how well she made, how well she made the auditor look in his job. So, the floor is yours.
Yeah, well, thank you. Yes, today, we'd like to recognize Kim Adenson, who's retiring from the auditor's office. As, as, as Karski mentioned, Kim started in the office as a, in 2016. So, on behalf of the auditor's office and all the employees of Minnehaw County, I want to thank Kim for her dedicated service for these past six years. Kim, Kim has served as the Finance and Budget Officer for Minnehaw County from 2016 to present. During that time, Kim has served in a leadership role directing the accounting, finance, and budgeting functions for Minnehaw County. Kim's accomplishments while in the auditor's office were many. Some of those accomplishments include implementation of the Munis, or our enterprise resource platform. So, basically, our accounting system that I think has really improved the process for us financially. She's developed an enhanced budgeting process, implemented strong financial controls, managed the growth of the budget from 80 million to the 2022 budget of 104 million. She has completed six successful audits, and she's restructured the charter of accounts to align with the Department Legislative Audit recommendations. And then- And then, uh, maybe most notably, the defining of the financial needs for the construction of the 43 million dollar Minnehaw County jail. So although, uh, Kim's leadership and management contribution to Minnehaw County were outstanding, it was her personal relationships she built and her willingness to share her knowledge with others that made her truly valuable employee, uh, at Minnehaw County. So I'd like to thank Kim Addison for her service, and, uh, we do have a gift for Kim that we'd like to present.
Come around the front, please, Kim.
Yeah.
Or around the back is fine.
Kim, these flowers are for you, uh, Commissioner's Office.
Thanks.
But we made up this highway sign that is, it's legal, it's not one that you took off the highway, but it's something I hope that you can hold on to to remember your time here at, uh, Minnehaw County.
Well, this is definitely.
Speech.
Yes.
Well, thank you, Ben, and, and everybody, um, this is definitely much more attention than is warranted. I do want to thank this commission for all of your support over the last six years. When I came to Minnehaha County, I had really no knowledge of local government or county government operations, and I can say after six and a half years, most days, I still feel like I don't have a lot of knowledge about local government. But I definitely appreciate all the support you've provided me. Um, and especially also the staff in our Auditor's Office. We've been through a lot of challenges over the years, and they've been a great team to work with. We have new faces that are also going to do a great job going forward. I'm probably not going to miss the, uh, budget hearings and, uh, payroll projections and the work every, every summer. But I do also want to thank, um, all of our hardworking, uh, department directors and department staff who assisted me through those pro, that process. We've got some really smart and dedicated people working throughout the county, and it's been a privilege to work with them. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Kim. Alrighty.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I remember when Kim came on board, and certainly it was a breath of fresh air, and, uh, I had a lot more confidence in those budgetary numbers that she complained about. And I'm retiring at the end of this year, maybe she'd like to run for my job.
The end of this year or next?
Oh, sorry, next year.
Oh, okay, just, just wondering.
Nightmare continues.
We're not that difficult. Alrighty, moving on to liaison reports, um, any liaison reports from Commissioners? Commissioner Heiburger?
Um, this last week, uh, the Safety and Justice Challenge contributes to the table talks that are happening, um, in jun, in conjunction with, uh, Sioux Superior Leadership Council. And we host, it was hosted at the Multicultural Center, and it was just looking for, um, we had targeted questions and basically looking for, what are we missing in the multicultural center and what could be envisioned as changes? It was a very diverse, uh, group, and I think some really good, um, responses came out of that. And so that's just continuing work of the grant that, uh, Minnehaw County received a few years ago.
Commissioner Bender?
I just, I've given a couple of updates on this, we continue to work on, um, the process with Barry Dunn to review the software for the state's attorney's office. Last week, we reviewed the, um, second prosecutor by carpeil, the other software option that we're looking at that we have in our budget to possibly purchase. And so the next step is, we've got a couple of issues that we're trying to work through about, um, how different functions would work, but Barry Dunn will then pro, provide us a comparison of the two options. I think they're looking at like 500 criteria or some crazy number, um, but they've been very helpful to work through. So that process is ongoing, um, but I don't have a final date yet for when that will be completed.
Alrighty, a lot of work done outside of these meetings, for sure. Any new business? Old business? No executives, oh wait, there is an executive session, Carol? Yeah, we do have exec. So I look for a motion to recess.
So moved.
Second, Bender?
Motion and a second recess, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All same sign, motion carries, we'll be at recess to 10:05, so we've got about eight minutes here. Shut her down, Tony.